Oh Gordon, that's right.
That's right. So they're with my mother-in-law. It's really conducive to productivity, so I'll go on the weekend. We're setting up a hotline, you know, I do the hotline every year, obviously. We can't all be in the same jam, and we're live together. So we've worked out, we figured out how to do a virtual hotline. We're gonna, we need to do it.
Kev, you're muted.
Hey Liz, I think I'm seeing you got a tough connection. Pretty good amount of pixelation, yep. Copy Liz, you might want to try that.
I'll go out and come back in.
Join, do we tell her just to not say a word and then we can conduct the meeting?
Well, worst-case scenario, she could call into the meeting.
Kevin, you let me know how long you want to wait for Gordon. He hasn't emailed me or called.
So didn't we get an affirmative yes from Gordon? Or a?
I did get an affirmative yes, he was in.
Where's, that is a pretty good echo coming out of somebody.
Is that better?
So Liz, I can hear you loud and clear. Oh yeah, okay, Gordon did not realize. So listen, Todd, I think Gordon did not realize it was a sex DM.
Okay.
So let's just figure out.
I'm not getting you very well either.
Your audio sounds much better Liz, but I do not.
Video off, and then I will simply make sure to poll you all. There's an echo, there's like a. Okay, so here I am, I'm talking.
Was that, did you have the echo when you said that?
I think it's Liz.
Liz, can you try talking again? Buffering right now.
Yeah, it's not you Kevin.
You want to try having Liz call in instead?
I think Liz, I think we might need you to phone in Liz.
Savvy they are, they have quite the threat to you.
Yeah, I know. Well, we're being, our virtual hotline is, it's, we're not. You know, they all have doors that close and windows that open. But we'll have like a microphone. You know, I mean, given all the absolute ballots, about 270,000 so far.
It's the, it's past.
It is a, like a factor, I mean, like many, many more, usually. 3% of the total. Still getting that echo, is that, what? Do you hear me still talking?
I can hear you. Hey, hey Kev, I can tell. I can tell you're in an open room. Like I don't get the echo you get, but you can, I can figure it's hollow. I don't know if you want to turn your volume down just a little bit? Might actually be you.
And I've never used this machine, so it's very possible.
Yeah.
You know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna get an earbud, I'll be right back.
Could be that in the bigger room also.
Yeah.
I think he sounds like the Wizard of Oz.
He is, you didn't know that?
I.
You need to go anywhere.
I had a feeling.
All right, if he's the wizard, Kevin, that makes you either. Dorothy, did you actually? Oh Gordon, Gordon joined us.
My apologies guys.
So once Kevin's back, I can, I think we're getting close.
All right, now, I logged back in.
It's her issue, she's got a little.
Yep.
Okay.
Through the current expiration of the emergency, but we'll see.
Okay.
Is there a reason why?
We're live, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Kevin O'Hern, Chair of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's virtual meeting. For the record, I would like to note that the required meeting agenda and application materials are all available on the town website. Because in-person attendance at public meetings is likely to increase the risk of transmission of COVID-19, this hearing is being conducted in accordance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B and Number 7I. Will the Town Planner please call the roll?
Commissioner O'Hern. Commissioner Prestige.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell. For the record, Commissioner O'Donnell is absent. Commissioner Gillette.
Here.
Commissioner Binkhurst.
Here.
And Commissioner Gomes is absent. That is the roll, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Demay, this is Kevin O'Hern, the Chair again. For the record, I'd like to note that we have a quorum of the Commission and Commissioner Big Horse will be seated on all items for tonight. Commission members and town staff are participating by webex. Members of the public can view the meeting live on West Hartford Community Television or on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast Channel 5 and Frontier TV Channel 6098 or www.whtv.org. The meeting is also being recorded for on-demand viewing, which will be available on the town website. Because of the virtual format of this meeting, there are some special rules and procedures that I need to cover before I begin. First, I ask that all participants please mute your microphones on your devices when you are not speaking. Second, pursuant to Executive Order 7B, all speakers must state their name and title each time they speak. Also, I will ask members of the Commission and staff to not address other participants directly. Comments and requests for information must be made through the Chair. After you state your name, simply preface your question or comment with "through the Chair", and when you are done, I will recognize the person who is most appropriate. With that, will the Town Planner please proceed with our first matter on the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Todd Demay, Town Planner. For the record, first matter on tonight's agenda are the approval of the regular virtual meeting minutes of the meeting from Monday, July 6th. At that meeting, the four of you, Commissioners O'Hern, Prestige, Gillette, and Binkhurst were all present and eligible to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Demay, this is Kevin O'Hern, the Chair again. And so all members are eligible for this, so I'll entertain a motion on this item. Mr. Prestige.
Kevin Prestige, move to approve the meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Prestige, I'd just like to note for the record, we do not require a second, therefore the motion is on the floor. Do we have any comments on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, let me try your minds. Mr. Demay, please, will you take the roll?
Commissioner Binkhurst.
Aye.
Commissioner Gillette.
Aye.
Commissioner Prestige.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hern.
Aye.
With that, Mr. Chairman, the minutes were approved unanimously.
Hey Commissioner Demay, this is Kevin O'Hern, Chair again. Next up on the agenda is item number two under Communications, I see none on the present agenda. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Demay?
Mr. Chairman, this is Todd Demay, I do not have any items to add.
Thank you, Mr. Demay, this is Kevin O'Hern, Chair again, moving on to new business. Item number three, we have an IWW application, 37 Buena Vista Road, Mr. Demay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Todd Demay, Town Planner, Designated Wetlands Agent for the record. 37 Buena Vista Road, Application Inland Wetland 1126 of the town of West Hartford, requesting approval of an inland wetlands and water course permit to conduct certain regulated activities which may have an adverse impact on a wetland and water course area. The application seeks permission to dredge and restore a portion of the trout brook located at the Buena Vista Recreation Facility to improve and restore its flood flow alterations, functions, and values. The proposed activity takes place within a wetland and water course and adjacent 150-foot upland review area, submitted for agency receipt on August 3rd, presented for determination of significance. As that brief introductions indicate, this work does take place directly in a regulated resource. You were provided with a brief application narrative along with a two-page plan set, one with the actual plan and the second detailed plan erosion control and construction narrative. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you request additional information, be provided, I am also open to passing that along to our Engineering Division.
Thank you, Commissioner Demay, this is Kevin O'Hern, the Chairman again. So the nature of this is a determination of significance, so if the purposes of discussion this, then let's first start with a motion on this item. Mr. Prestige.
I move that we set this, we determine that this application is significant, or potentially be significant, and we set for hearing at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is September 9th. I'd also, in that motion, include a few requests of the applicant for when they do come before us. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to put those forth now, or would you like me to hold?
Mr. Prestige, please, this is Kevin O'Hern, Chair again, please proceed, yes.
Kevin Prestige again, so there's three things that I would think we would want to see when the applicant comes before us. First is a statement about the town or its contractor adhering to the Connecticut, the current Connecticut sediment and erosion controls. Additionally, information about a construction sequence, a bit more detail. I will note that the information put forth by the town in this application specifically about the purpose and the feasible and prudent alternatives is good, but we do need some more information. The last thing after the construction sequence, I would also like to know information about soil stockpiling and how that's going to be handled. And along with that soil stockpiling, any de-watering of that soil.
Thank you, Mr. Prestige, this is Kevin O'Hern, Chair again. So the motion is on the table, Mr. Prestige was the first to speak. Do we have any comments on this? I'll start with Ms. Gillette, who is available by the phone. Ms. Gillette, do you have any comments on this motion?
No, I don't, I, well, I fully endorse Mr. Prestige's recommendations and requests. And I would just like to ask in a general, general way, we've had a number of these types of requests. And I'm pleased to see that the town is taking seriously the maintenance of its water courses and their functionality and improving their purposes for such. And I would like more information, but I would love to second this.
Thank you, Ms. Gillette, this is Kevin O'Hern, Chair again. Mr. Big Horse, do you have any comment?
My only thing I would like to be addressed is the area around the stockpiles themselves in terms of sedimentation and erosion controls, especially as wet, those could easily slide right back into the wetlands and water courses from whence they came.
Thank you, Mr. Big Horse, this is Kevin O'Hern, Chair again, do we have any other comments on this item currently? I would just like to say that my colleagues, my esteemed colleagues have, I think, hit it on the head, I am in the same place as they are. I do, I do think this warrants a discussion before the Commission. So I will also be voting for this to go forward next month. So, Mr. Big Horse, please.
Gordon Binkhurst again, just one additional item was, once they clear these stockpiles, which are gonna, I understand are gonna be, the material's gonna be trucked out off-site, do they have a, you know, revegetation plan in place for those areas?
Mr. Demay, please, do you have an answer to that? Or is that just something that?
It was stated, Mr. Chairman, Todd Demay, for the record. I think that was stated as more of a request by Mr. Mr. Binkhurst to be included when we see it. I got those items, we're up to six comments now of additional information to supplement the application.
This is Kevin O'Hern, Chair again, sorry, I misunderstood the nature of the question. Okay, that's what that would be for a future, at the, at the hearing. Okay, so unless we have anything further, then let's try your minds. Mr. Demay, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Binkhurst.
Aye.
Commissioner Gillette.
Aye.
Commissioner Prestige.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hern.
Aye.
With that, Mr. Chairman, by unanimous vote, the application was found to be potentially significant and scheduled for public hearing at our regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September 9th. And for the record, I would like to note that is a Wednesday meeting because Monday, the 7th, is Labor Day.
Thank you, Mr. Demay, this is Kevin O'Hern, Chair again. And so then, next up, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so we will move right on to our Town Council referral. The next up is item number five, 340 North Main Street, Mr. Demay.
340 North Main Street, application on behalf of Dotcom Wine and Spirits, Inc., aka Maximum Beverage, prospective tenant and property located at 316 to 340 North Main Street within existing Special Development District Number 7. The application seeks permission to convert approximately 7,700 square feet of unused tenant space on the lower level of the shopping plaza into a new wine, beer, and spirit retail store. Associated exterior facade renovations, including additional signage, parking, and landscape improvements are proposed. If you're not familiar with the space, or you have not had a chance to go and drive by, it's on the backside or the east side of the plaza underneath, essentially underneath the Whole Foods tenant space. It's immediately adjacent to the Anytime Fitness, so Anytime Fitness is the only other tenant on the backside or underneath that portion of the shopping plaza. When that was approved several years ago by the Town Council, there was a restriction put in place that said any further use of any of the tenant's base on the ground floor or the backside of that building had to go back for an additional Special Development District amendment. And that really is the genesis of the application. Now, since it's a Special Development District, there's minor improvements to the facade, very minor in that they're really only introducing some new windows in the facade, within the facade and a signage band above the location. Also, one small sign on the front side of the building off North Main Street indicating that this potential tenant is on the backside. The other improvements proposed are some minor landscaping amendments and parking modifications to slightly increase the number of striped parking spaces on the backside adjacent to this tenant, proposed tenant space. Other than that, that really encapsulates the nature of the request in a very short order. Is based on scheduling, has not gone before our Design Review Advisory Committee yet, but is scheduled to do so next week. There are minor, very minor facade changes, I don't anticipate any significant concern from track. If anything, we'll just take a look at the signage. With that, I'll keep my introduction and review of the application brief and turn it over back through you, Mr. Chairman, to the rest of the Commission if there are any questions that I can answer.
Oh, Mr. Ed, do you have any questions or comments on this item?
My only thought on this was the issue of parking, which we talked about in the plan of development and have struggled with. And I'm very comfortable with the idea that the people using the Dotcom are going to be sort of in and out. It's not a two-hour duration like a restaurant, or a doctor's office visit, or a prolonged visit like grocery shopping. And I'm very comfortable with the reduction, and actually pleased with the reduction in the parking standard requirements that will be necessary for this usage back there. And I'm glad we have the provision to be able to evaluate each tenant based on the very limited parking that's back there. I also am curious in what Design Review will come up with in terms of additional screening for the eastern side of that parking area that butts onto the, onto the apartments, and if they intend to add any addition, additional landscaping. And that's my only thoughts, I think it's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Gillette, this is Kevin O'Hern, the Chair again, do we have any other comments on this item? While everyone's thinking, I'll just kick in with a question. The Neighborhood Outreach Letter is a form letter. There's no other, there's no other information in the packet as to whether this neighborhood outreach has taken place and what they were gonna, it's gonna be a virtual one from what I can tell here. But, you know, just that, you know, Anytime Fitness was kind of a big deal when it came along. It was mainly about the hours that Anytime Fitness kept. But, you know, there was some discussion, if I recall correctly, over the signage and how that affects those neighbors that are, that are directly behind. So I do think Neighborhood Outreach is quite important in this. So do we, do we know what the status of this is?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Todd Demay, Town Planner, for the record. Yes, so last week, on July 28th at 7:00 PM, they did hold their virtual open house session to discuss the application. I just got the results of that meeting informally emailed to me today from their attorney, and the report was, there were 15 individuals who attended the open house, including representatives from the applicant and the property owner. Overall, the number of residents expressed strong, so this is coming from the email, strong support from the proposal, noting that they thought it was a traffic safety improvement, adding an additional tenant back there with some potential improvements. And if you look at our traffic, our own town engineering request for some traffic improvements on the backside, so re-striping the double center yellow line and adding an existing, an additional speed hump to slow traffic, but they thought it was a better location for this proposed tenant. There was one representative from the neighboring Crown Market that did express some concerns about parking and possible spillover effects from this commercial plaza over to that plaza. That has been a longstanding concern shared by both property owners. So they did point that out in their outreach. But other than that, there was nearly unanimous support that was apparently provided as a result of that meeting. I expect that this will be formalized in a more formal transmittal back to the Council. Happy to share that with you once I receive a more formal notice. That's all I have to report, that they did conduct it.
Thank you, Mr. Demay. This is Kevin Ahern, Chair again. I appreciate you answering that question so thoroughly. Could you just repeat? I missed the part, when is DRAK meeting on this?
Yes, DRAK will meet on the 13th, so next Thursday.
Okay, thank you. This is Kevin Ahern, Chair again. Thank you, Mr. Demay. Do we have any other...
This is, sorry. Normally, we note in our agenda, this is scheduled for hearing on September 8th. So normally, we might have had another, another bite at the apple, however, based on the schedule with the holiday. That's, that's why we're, we're taking it first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Demay. This is Kevin Ahern, Chair again. Do we have any other further questions or comments from the Commission? Mr. Big Horse.
That was really the question.
Mr. Big Horse, I believe you were muted for most of that question. Did you, you're good now, maybe repeat that question.
My apologies. My question was regarding trash management. I didn't see any dumpsters on the plan or otherwise addressed anywhere. And the other item that I saw missing was they did a parking study, but I didn't see anything regarding truck, traffic, and/or a delivery schedule that should be, I feel, addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Big Horse. This is Kevin Ahern again. Todd, I assume you have nothing to add to that, or you would have jumped in?
Mr. Chairman, Todd Demay, Town Planner, for the record. Actually, both of those items will be addressed in my staff comments, particularly the trash management plan. But keep in mind, the backside of the building, this location is sandwiched in between the two existing dumpster locations for, for much of the plaza, so I assume, although it's not indicated in the plans, that one of those will be assigned to this tenant location in addition to the unloading and loading areas. It's not clear to me, I believe it's the one immediately to the north of the tenant location that will be the loading zone, given its proximity, but I just want to get that confirmed. But we will get a formalized trash management statement from the applicant as part of that process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demay. This is Kevin Ahern, Chair again. Do we have any other, any further questions or comments from the Commissioners on this item? Okay, and so at this point, then I would entertain a motion. The nature of the motion would be either a recommendation to approve or a recommendation to not approve. Entertain a motion. Mr. Big Horse. No, no, let's, let's have Ms., let's have Ms. Gillette do it. She's been on the phone and, 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 let's have Ms. Gillette do it. Ms. Gillette.
And I've been, I've been unusually quiet considering I don't have to type in. I move, we recommend approval with the concerns addressed that we've mentioned to the Town Council.
Thank you, Ms. Gillette. This is Kevin Ahern, Chair again, and thank you, Mr. Big Horse, for yielding on that. And so we have a motion to approve. The motion is then now on the table. And so do we have any comments on the motion before we try our minds here? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Demay, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Binkhurst.
Aye.
Commissioner Gillette.
Aye.
Commissioner Prestige.
Aye.
Commissioner Ahern.
Aye.
With that, Mr. Chairman, the recommendation for approval to the Town Council is unanimous for application amendment to Special Development District Number 7.
Thank you, Mr. Demay. This is Kevin Ahern, Chair again. So then, we are done with item number five. I see nothing under the Town Planner's Report unless, Mr. Demay, you have anything late break.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any information items or anything under Town Planner's Report. So for items six and seven on agenda, I have no new content to provide.
Okay, thank you. This is Kevin Ahern, Chair again. Then before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I just wanted to take a moment to praise the staff of the Planning and Zoning Office. You and Rob and everybody, you really have been killing it. I know that you guys have had a lot of stuff going on, and I really appreciate all the work that you guys have been doing. And I also want to praise West Hartford Community Television and West Hartford Community Interactive. I, you know, I check in on the YouTube stream every now and then, and it's just, it looks excellent. You guys do a great job, so thank you for that. So with that, then, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Big Horse.
I'll make the motion to adjourn for the evening.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Motion's on the table, and Mr. Demay, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Binkhurst.
Aye.
Commissioner Gillette.
Aye.
Commissioner Prestige.
Aye.
Commissioner Ahern.
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.